It still says stop the video, the video stopped, something in the settings.
Appreciate you. So, good evening to all of you who are here at this special call meeting for the Community Safety Wellness Task Force. We do have a call in present, it is now 6:04, we will get started. I do want to share my screen quickly, there's no a larger agenda here, as it was stated on to public notice, the agenda will consist of a discussion of the attached proposal from the Crisis Response Roundtable. We will be screen sharing that proposal. This is considered the second reading for this proposal from that roundtable. We were, we are doing first and second readings to give Task Force members opportunity to look through recommendations that come forth. There has been at least four, five days for us to do so. This is considered a second reading, which in my experience, at least, has been seen as a place for any changes, any necessary change that Task Force members may need, may think is necessary. So, I've given members of, members of that roundtable opportunity to do some editing if necessary. And I think it would be helpful if we could, well, before we start with the recommendation of screen sharing, the actual recommendation. Just a reminder also that for recommend, for most of our votes, we are majority, a simple majority. For recommendations to, to come out of the task force, we agree that we would have two thirds majority of those present. I think that's most of the the setup, the house, house rules, are any questions before we start opening the floor for any motion or discussion? Any questions? From Task Force members?
Would it be helpful for us to review the proposal?
I was going to say it would be nice to hear from you all who are on the crisis response team that put this together, if there's like anything you'd want to highlight, just like on behalf of your roundtable committee, I think that would be a nice place to start. Wanda's hand though, but then it went away maybe.
It's probably the same thing, Wanda?
Oh, no, I just had a question, and that is that I saw that, and this may not be the time, so please forgive me. I saw the proposal from the Community Safety Department that appeared to mirror almost exactly what the crisis response proposal looked like. So, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that that is out there, but I'm confused about how that came forward, and there didn't seem to be any acknowledgement or recognition of the crisis response teams' participation in that process. So, yeah, so that's a question that I have.
That's a great question, because I can see how that could definitely raise some, raise some red flags, or just concerns about understanding that. And, and just the short answer is that what the department is, the Community Safety Department is doing is parallel or separate from what their roundtable is doing, what we're doing as a task force. And so, I assume all of that will come to light as we discuss, so I love Jesse's suggestion to go ahead and make, and discuss the recommendations, how they came about it, and if you guys could, one of you could go ahead and screen share that? So we can take a look at it together. So, request is to hear from the roundtable, yes, thank you.
I can start by maybe trying to answer Wanda's question, would that be helpful?
Yeah, this is, guys, we're not gonna make this too formal, this is an open discussion, so feel free to speak on it, on this, this is the only agenda item. Share your hearts.
Awesome. Yeah, so we did not, as a roundtable, we did not see the community of safety, wellness, safety proposal until it was sent out to our task force. And we have been in the same listening sessions as the, as a couple of staff of the of the community, of the Department of Safety and Wellness folks, so they heard a lot of the same community input that we did, I mean, they heard all of the community input that we did, so, yeah, so my sense is it's not too surprising that their proposal kind of reflects the same sort of voices that, that we heard, I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that.
I would add too, this is a great question, because it's one that we have discussed at length in our roundtable meetings and with members of the Department of Community Safety, largely to understand how to best be respectful of everyone's time, given all of our many commitments and how exhausting the pandemic is, and so I would echo what ESAC said, that the roundtable has been very active in helping to initiate and create space for a lot of that community involvement. At the same time, and Dwayne, please correct me if I speak incorrectly about this, but my understanding also is that as the Director of the Department of Community Safety, Ryan Smith is charged with coming up with some of those specific recommendations. And so, we knew that that was coming down the pike, and we're starting to be and will continue to be an active conversation around those things. But also, the scope of what the department is capable of recommending, and the scope of what the, the task force is capable of recommending is not perfectly overlapped, and so we as a roundtable felt that this recommendation specifically, not just that the roles in the Department of Community Safety be funded, looking forward to them eventually being defined and filled as necessary for some of these pilot projects to roll out, but specifically to request that that funding come from these, this, this bit of money that, to the best of our understanding, is currently frozen and not going anywhere. We understood that to be a very useful and reasonable sort of line item change in, in the budget, and and felt that it would have, of all possible sources of the funding for those 15 positions, would have the lowest impact on our other service providers throughout the community, including law enforcement. So, that was, I think that's the thing that sets us apart, is that we're recommending the funding, and that we're recommending that the funding come from a particular place.
Mike had his hand up.
Yeah, Jennifer, I think you, you pretty much answered that, because as Wanda was talking, when I was reviewing Ryan's presentation, I didn't see any particular proposal in there particularly related, as you were just saying, to any funding, in fact, but what I could see, he makes a reference to the fact that they can launch their four planned pilots with quote "currently available resources", and you, your brief recommendation does, just says, you know, direct those to the Department of Community Safety, it doesn't specify where in the department those should go. So, I'm sure when, when discussion ensues, that may be a potential, a little bit of like the determination to be determined by Ryan Smith or whatever, so that, you know, those, those 15 positions or the, and/or the equivalent salary line total, wherever the city might choose to get it, should be directed to the Department of Community Safety with Ryan and his staff deciding where they need those to go, because it may not be to fund the pilots, but it may be for some other part of this, the growing department that could use the resource equivalent to 15 FTEs.
Yeah, thank you, and I would.
Yeah, because I didn't see, I didn't see the same kind of overlap that, that Wanda was sensing, although there clearly is a lot of similarity between what Ryan's, his department is proposing, what you guys are developing.
Yeah, it's a division of labor, I see Manju's hand up, and I want to pass to her, I just wanted to reiterate that, yes, your, your understanding by my understanding is correct, that this is what we're intending to propose, that those line items will move over, it's our understanding that they would be useful as just FTEs that were here and then went here, but we're also not explicitly dictating what the Department of Community Safety should do with it, other than support pilot work. Manju, did you have an addition?
Oh, yeah, yes, to Wanda's question, Wanda asks, has $1 million been set aside by the city for task force proposals, is that still correct? Yes. I guess, maybe there is a question to the Department of Community Safety. Is that 1 million being tracked by the Department of Community Safety, and have we depleted some portion of that so far that is worth noting?
The money has, is being tracked, and most of it has just been towards incentives for listening sessions or the town hall.
Great.
So, significant questions remaining.
Thank you. The thing I wanted to lift to the group is just, I think this is the thing that really sets our proposal apart, the idea that, and this is kind of maybe the core background behind why it feels important to reallocate those resources from the 15 FTE vacancies that were frozen in the budget last June for discussion this January. These new positions would guarantee that community members can directly access unarmed, skilled, compassionate crisis response through the Department of Community Safety without contributing to the overburden of law enforcement, and more efficiently responding to diverse community needs, so there are specific pieces of work that are currently held by law enforcement that would be relieved by these new roles being established in the Department of Community Safety, and we anticipate this would this would include the creation of alternative dispatch systems that don't automatically trigger law enforcement response. So, we're envisioning that it not have to be routed through 911, but that there could also be other ways of reaching dispatch and and 24-hour unarmed crisis response services with maximum coverage during the high volume hours from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m. And we figured that out by looking at the current 911 highest call volume times. It felt significant to us to note that during the span of our conversations over the last two weeks, three different deaths have happened at the hands of three different law enforcement agencies based in Durham. One was I believe it was January 4th, Durham County Sheriff's Deputy responding to a 911 call and taking the life of 28-year-old Stephanie Wilson. The second was person named Charles, his last name, I'm, I'm forgetting, but he it was a a, a call around suicide in progress that DPD responded to, and apparently, he was harming the clerk at a gas station and was killed during that encounter, and then the third situation just happened this past week at Duke Hospital. Someone who allegedly reached for a law enforcement officer's firearm and was in turn shot and killed, and yeah, so we're, we're, we're presenting this proposal in that backdrop, which wasn't all the, the most recent death had not happened at the time that we carved out this proposal, but it's in the spirit of intervening on these kinds of losses in our community, these kinds of unnecessary deaths and offering more investment in skilled compassionate unarmed crisis response options that Durham residents are able to reach out to, hopefully at any hour of the day. And we'd really like to see it as maximally staffed as possible. We really heard that need loud and clear in our town hall over those two days and over the three listening sessions that we've conducted since then. Sorry, two listening sessions, not three.
Marcia's hands up, and then Mike.
So, do you not, the money for the crisis response, by don't we believe that the city, if we put forward a really great, you know, recommendation about crisis response, and it looks like the Department of Community Safety has put together you know, a really good presentation, that it will get funded? Do you think that the funding for this, that, because it just seems like this is the beginning of something that hopefully will grow and grow and grow? And to connect it to 15 positions, it, does it, does it imply that the city is not supporting this, or that their support is uncertain? And that that's the money that, you know, what is the budget for this, by the way? It's just what I'm, what I'm, what I'm used to, is a proposal, and then after you get support for the proposal, then you, you talk about the funding.
I think that would be a preferable procedure in general, but it was made clear to us that if we want to have any impact on the city budget, that we need to get a recommendation on how to organize that budget out by tomorrow. So, to that end, we are aware of what Ryan is proposing, we are in conversation with Ryan about what he's proposing. And we have been directly involved in the formulation and, and I'm going to pick a bad verb, acquisition and, and learning from the community, like the data and, and the listening and the lessons that have been gone into that planning. What we are capable of doing as a task force, and this is my understanding, based on how good of a listener I am, and Dwayne explains all the procedures to us, is that we uniquely have the capacity to not only recommend I think a, a full-throated endorsement of this department through funding it, but also to provide options that we recommend about where they can find that money. So, I think it is, I, I would also love a world where we have more time, my take is that we just don't have it. And that in the absence of that kind of time, we are doing our best to identify funds that we feel are appropriate to reallocate to this particular purpose and advocate for their reallocation, knowing that they are going to be needed.
I think I would add a different take, or an additional take, which is just that, these these, so in June of last year, there was an enormous groundswell of public support for the creation of an unarmed compassionate crisis responder role, and a strong push from hundreds and hundreds of community members writing in and speaking to city council and asking for for that position, for those positions to be pulled from the rolling body of vacancies that the Durham Police Department carries over from budget to budget. Currently, between 70 to 90 positions, I'm not sure exactly how many, and maybe we can ask our city council liaisons if they know where things are right now, but city council responded at that time, we'll take five of those vacancies and allocate them to launch the Department of Community Safety. And then we'll take 15 of those vacancies and we'll freeze them for a mid-year decision about whether to allocate them to the Department of Community Safety. And so we're directly responding to that decision by city council to return to this question in January of this year. And as the body tasked with representing and convening and channeling community voices into this question of what community safety can look like, that really meets all of our needs, this feels like like very directly within our purview.
I am 100% in favor of the crisis response teams, task force, roundtable, excuse me, proposal, as well as the new Department of Community Safety's proposal in terms of unarmed staff and the significance of having 911 calls routed to other professionals that have a lot of experience in many different areas. And I understand what you're saying about what you've heard in the excellent community conversations and all of the other extraordinary efforts that you've put forth, so I really want to say that first. What I'm hearing from the community, and perhaps others have, is that the shortage of law enforcement during this crisis time is of great concern, there are individuals who are saying that they're afraid to eat out in Durham because of the gun violence and all of the other things that are happening in terms of deaths and whatever, wherever the violence is from. And so, for that reason, I am extremely hesitant in terms of those positions being used for this process, when in fact there might be funds from the city to cover not only 15, but even more responders. So, that's, that's what I'm hearing from the community, and that's, that's a real concern, that at this time, taking those positions away from law enforcement is, is of great concern to me.
I want to, I am a part of that, I am in most of the meetings with the crisis response roundtable, and they will tell you that in our meetings, our public meetings that I've advocated, let's not, can we just not say where it should come from, can we just say, this is our vision, and let, just let the city council make that decision, and I would, I would hope that the majority of our recommendations would be in that aspirational lens. However, this is, these are funds that were frozen for this purpose in the past, and I, I too have heard concerns, and for me, the 15 positions that we're talking about would still leave about 70, 70 positions that are still vacant. So, these were frozen and moved to the side, but there's still at least 70 other positions, maybe more, still vacant, that aren't being filled, so this is not, this would not be taking away positions that the department, at least currently, is able to fill right now, and I know that there's some moves to make, make things better, and to attract more officers, but the needs of non, the need for nonviolent response is great, is just as great as a need for a response to violence. And if we are moving armed responders away from calls where they are not, where armed response is not needed, that, that, that actually, in my opinion, increases the capacity for the armed responders. I hope that made any sense at all, so if it were, i- if we, if we, if the department was up, was fully funded, and all the vacancies were filled, and we were trying to pull away from a situation where they were like, we need more positions because we've, we've run out of spots, and we're trying to get more people in, I would feel hesitant as well, but knowing that, that we, as, as is the case with the entire country, are trying hard to fill these positions, we would love to see the 15 slots that were set aside for this to be put in place. So, that's where my hesitance, you see, gets pulled back some. They've got, they've got plenty of other positions that they're still trying to fill. Yeah, I have Mike and Marcia.
Thank you, Manju and Jennifer, that context actually makes a big difference, because one of my hesitations with this initial proposal was, to me, it's, it doesn't seem typical for a task force to present ideas about how something should be funded, we need to say how much it will cost, and leave it up to the budget planning process, but this is somewhat unique, so I think as long as that can be clearly communicated to the city council and the county commission, that this is in a kind of extraordinary circumstance, that recommendations in the future from the task force are not going to include that level of direction and where funds should be, you know, revenue raised, or funds re-diverted, but this is a circumstance where these were specifically frozen for this particular time, you know, budget work session in January to determine. And I don't even know if you really need to put that, you know, background context in the wording of the resolution, as long as, you know, especially our liaisons can make it clear that this is why this task force is suggesting being this direct, and where they think the funding should come. That said, it might still be useful to suggest these 15 positions, or the, or the FTE budgetary equivalent, that the city should commit to that, wherever they choose to find it from, your suggestion, and then the most obvious place to do it is in these 15 positions that were already frozen for this purpose. And then, also, just to be, I got, I was clear, and then less clear when Manju was explaining where you all kind of see the, the real need for these 15 positions to go in the department on unarmed crisis response, which sort of implies responders as opposed to call diversion, so I think you may just want to be clear as to whether you're saying the 15 positions that are FTE equivalent, and they'll let Ryan Smith and his staff decide where they want that to go, or you know, and we think those 15 should go in the following specific places. Because you, you leave it appropriately kind of general at the outset, and in the background, you suggest places where it probably should go, and those are the places where, by Ryan's presentation, he seems currently adequately resourced. You see the, you know, I think you wanted to defer to his judgment, but, but if you're, if you're saying, for instance, we think this, then, and now that you have the benefit of Ryan's presentation, you can perhaps suggest, you know, places where he's, he's made it clear he doesn't already have the, the staffing in place that he needs, especially call diversion.
I'm sorry, can we get a response to Mike's comment before we go to Marcia and then Samuel?
Maybe I missed the question, do you mind distilling that again, Mike?
I think that you're, you're, the, the, the clear context, this is sort of an extraordinary, unusual, it won't be the typical task force recommendation. That made it, that, that clarified things for me, it was a more suggestion, or if you think it's even necessary to include any of that context, or the, our city council liaisons present will know that, and will be able to bring that into the meeting. The other suggestion was that you might include in the resolution if the 15 vacancies or their FTE equivalent in terms of, of the, of a total budget line, or a budget allocation, so that the city can decide, yes, we do in fact want to continue to shift these 15 frozen positions, or things have come up, and we're going to find that equivalent amount of money somewhere else. Because we've decided we need to spend that money in the, in the DPD budget on raises, as they talked about today, or whatever. You're still recommending that they should come from those 15 frozen positions, but as long as the equivalent amount of money is still shifted to, to the Department of Community Safety. shifted to, to the Department of Community Safety, that's the end goal, I would think. So if there's a question, is that your real, the end goal of this is to get the Department of Community Safety, that additional amount of money? Or is it to ensure that those fifteen positions or the budgetary equivalent go away from the, the DPD?
For, for clarity, real quick, when we talk about Ryan's claim that he has the current resources to run these pilot, are we referring to the bullet point on slide number two that says staffing and service levels with current resources?
That, yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking, and that word, the word city, city council agenda word file where he talks about it as well. He, he clearly lays out other places where, you know, you can see that chart where staffing is, is to be determined, to be filled. But that, but the particular for the crisis responder models, at least if I read it correctly, as, as a pilot version, not a full program, but as a pilot, seemed according to him to be adequate.
I don't want to jump in, Manju, if you had a response to offer. Okay. So I mean, I would, I, I I would offer this read, that Ryan is extremely good at his job and is proposing ways in which, you know, in which unarmed crisis response blood can be squeezed from the stone that is the current department. Like he's not going to turn in a proposal that's like, what am I to do? You know, so, so I, I would say that like, I think it is very professional and appropriate and, and of him and a sign of his reliability and his leadership, honestly, that he is talking about ways to do these things with what they currently have. And my honest professional assessment is they can't do these things well with what they currently have. I don't know that Ryan is in a position to say that out loud. But I, I think that, that the, the resources currently available to them, I, I would not hesitate to use the word modest. And I also believe that underfunding these things is the best way to create disappointment in the community, right? So, um,
So you think the current language is appropriately, it, it strikes the balance of deferring to his, his decision about where the fifteen should go as a department, but you're suggesting a likely key place would be for unarmed crisis response pilots. Regardless of what you said, he's thinking, I can make do with what I got. But this gives him the leeway to, to put more there without directing him directly to do so. I see, I, that makes sense that you're, you've managed to not make it a voluminous, voluminous document.
We definitely use the passive voice like a weapon in the, yes. So, so we absolutely have been very, you hit the nail on the head with my rhetorical style. So, yeah. Correctly, correctly stated. I think, I think, I don't believe that we are actually capable of directing Ryan to do anything. So insofar as we recommend that it be spent on this, I feel like that is equivalent to exactly what you're saying of like, we really, really would like you to spin it on this. It's ultimately up to you. If you receive the funds, that's literally what you have been hired and empowered to do. I would be open to adding some language to clarify that if that's necessary. I, I do feel like it exists in, in force in the document though. Yeah. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for that. Marcia?
Yeah, I was just wondering, so there was a lot of support for freezing these fifteen positions and using it, you know, freezing it and then finding out what would be the best use of the, these funds. Do we know on the council, if there's any, if there's any opposition to that, like what? Why, if they did that already, you know, if there was a council vote, if I'm understanding the history correctly, have you checked in with the council people? Do we know that this is, that the council, like where are we on that?
I mean, both the council and the Board of County Commissioners have said about various decisions of the, over the last year, we're waiting for the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force to get the ball rolling and we're hoping to hear community input on these items. And this is one of the, this is one of the places where we heard a, a wish early on for there to be clear recommendations coming out of our task force around this role of the unarmed crisis responder. And yeah, I don't think we have to underscore how unique a situation is that that the staffing for one department was frozen in the vacancies of another department, but that's just not a thing I've seen before in our city budget processes, but the city staff and the city council members are are very knowledgeable about that. Like I don't, I don't think we have to weigh in on the uniqueness of that situation.
Marcia did specifically ask about
Yeah, I just
City Council, so.
Yeah, if Gillian
Yeah.
Councilwoman, I would love to hear your thoughts on this, dear.
Yeah, happy, happy to weigh in. So, so the first thing I'll say is that the decision to freeze the positions and then reconsider moving them in January was made by a different council, first of all. So there are three new people, or sorry, two new people. And so there may very well be different opinions now about what should happen with those positions. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that because we voted to do that at the budget seat, at the budget cycle, that that means that there's now a majority of support on the council for it. And I don't know that there is or isn't. I just, I know that, I know the people, there is no longer a majority of people who would support moving those positions that I know of. I don't know how Elaine or Leo feel about it yet. And also that that decision was in some ways like a kicking the can down the road kind of decision, like it, it wasn't, it was a, it was a compromise built out of kind of a, a calculation of like not wanting to do too much too fast, not based on what was needed. It, it, in, in my opinion, it was a political compromise, not a, not a decision based on what we thought the Community Safety Department was actually going to need or was actually going to be able to do. It was, it was more a decision about trying to thread the needle of supporting this new program. Trying to leave, leave a window open for it to be transformative, but not, not upsetting people too much with too much change right off the bat. So that's kind of how I, that's how I interpret that vote. I think that the conversation that we have tomorrow will give me, will give all of us a clearer idea of like how the new council members especially feel about, about whether or not we should move those positions. And without, without those two, without their, without me knowing their feelings on it, I don't really know how it'll go.
Thank you. Do we have a, a understanding of what the budget from the crisis roundtable, response roundtable? What, what would be your ideal budget? What will it cost? Have you gotten that far in your recommendate? You know, as you've crafted, as you're crafting this recommendation for the city, do we have a budget that's in, you know, just in overall?
Are you asking our roundtable or are you asking?
The roundtable, your roundtable. You know, so like in other words, what is the budget? What are we asking for? Because you don't, I'm just concerned about getting locked into fifteen positions when what we really want is a really well-funded and now and in the future unarmed response.
So I can also respond to that real quick, which is that there will be a whole budget process over the next couple of months where we'll make a decision in July about how much funding the Community Safety Department is going to get for the next fiscal year. This particular question about the frozen positions is outside of that budget process. So this is just a question of like, those positions were reserved for a mid-year decision, which we don't usually do. We don't have mid-year decisions typically. The rest of, like the overall funding for the department will go through our normal budget process. This is just a question of what we do with those positions that we froze six months ago, anticipating another conversation about, about what to do with them.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
Thank you. Samuel, thank you for your patience.
Yes, of course. Um, to kind of follow up on what Mike had brought up earlier about specificity, I wanted to know if you all consider now, this may be too specific or not, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but, um, have you all considered recommending that the Department of Community Safety with these new fifteen roles, specifically if they are positions of unarmed skilled crisis responders, that they receive some form of cultural competency training? And in addition to that, that they are able to break the language barrier in certain instances. So you have services that are available for non-English or non-native English-speaking people.
I want to say that that really resonates with what we heard throughout the town hall at the listening session at El Centro, at the listening session at Campus Hills. Thanks for lifting up those specific concerns. We asked ourselves if we should get more detailed about what we'd like to see in the crisis responders. And we ended up instead deciding, so you see at the end of the proposal, there's just several questions about, like, we'd really like depthful meaning, community input in the questions of who, what, when, where, how. But we get the sense that the Department of Community Safety is listening because they've been very involved in being present for the town hall, present for the listening sessions, helping coordinate the kind of back of the house infrastructure that helped folks feel really welcomed and make, making the spaces accessible. And when I read Ryan's presentation that he's going to be doing for city council on, on Thursday, which if members of the public want to tune into that, like you just go to the city council agenda for Thursday, scroll down to item ten, there's three attachments and one of them is the presentation he's going to be doing, one of them is the proposal, and then the third is an addendum. But if you read that, there's a lot of stuff around what folks were sharing in our listening sessions, reflected in what they're hoping to to show up with. We decided to not get that textured about it, but would be super open to this counts, this task forces input in that regard, if there are particular pieces like cultural competency and language access that we already heard loud and clear in the listening sessions, we'd, we'd be glad to include it. And we think the Department of Community Safety is already tuning into those important concerns. There are at least eighty vacancies in DPD. Is it your sense that with eighty vacancies, DPD will not have the staffing they need to address some?
Hello? Hello? Hello?
I hear someone saying hello.
Who's, who's that?
Muffin.
Great, great. Thank you.
Manju, we lost your, we lost your audio.
Yeah, that's, I was confused.
We still can't hear you.
Well, now we can't hear Manju.
Yeah, I don't hear Manju and I don't see Muffin. It was like.
Muffin's calling in, so we won't see her on the screen, but we're going to try to find out what's going on with Manju's audio.
Here's the host, Xavier. You ought to be able to unmute her, I would think. You go to participants and find her name.
She can unmute. She just, we can't hear her even when she's not muted.
Yeah. It may be her headset.
Manju, did you share your link and your unique link with Ms. Muffin?
Right, because she may have taken over that link.
Dwayne, you should be a detective. Next career.
Yeah, there was a bunch of stuff she cut and paste, I saw Manju cut and paste it into the chat.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what is happening.
Um, I, so hearing the first part of the question, I mean, with eighty vacancies, right, there's no way those are going to be filled anytime soon. The, the, you know, police academy enrollments usually are something around twenty. The last couple have been below ten. So, you know, it would take eight academies at that rate to fill those vacancies and they do two a year typically. And, you know, this is the same problem that lots of cities are having and we're having in the city overall. There's something like a fifteen percent vacancy rate in city government already, like across departments, public safety, like police and fire are a little bit higher. But you know, this, this is a, a national problem at this point. It's just become really hard to, to hire people for any kind of work and especially for this sort of, you know, difficult like field and not very highly paid work. It's just, you know, we're, we're seeing lots and lots of people leaving these kinds of fields right now. The great resignation, as they say.
I think on the flip side, we're really, we studied the RTI report to city council really carefully and we're hearing loud and clear that there are many things that city council, that, sorry, that DPD is holding that even Durham police officers reported in their focus groups felt like beyond their bandwidth, not the right role. And so if what we're able to do is really robustly staff the Department of Community Safety to do excellent unarmed, skilled, compassionate crisis response for the Durham residents who want to reach out to those services, then it, it really actually like frees up DPD to perhaps not need to expand, but be able to deepen their focus on a more focused role.
We're, we're getting close to an hour in this. Jesse has his hand up. I would like to make sure that we are hearing from everyone who did want to weigh in on this matter as well. Jesse?
Thanks, Xavier. And thanks, everyone, for the feedback and the conversation. It sounds like based on, and this is why I wanted to listen initially, because I've read everything, but it's nice to just like hear where people are coming from. It seems as though, to Mike's point, this is somewhat of a specific request that the crisis response roundtable isn't just generally saying like fund these positions, however many that Ryan has or needs, because it's likely more than just fifteen. But what's specific, based on the, the decision of the previous city council, that there are these fifteen full-time employee spots that are out there in sort of this bureaucratic political purgatory of sorts. And we, we have a chance to comment specifically about those positions. And so part of me feels like is it the will of the group to comment generally or specifically? And I guess because of the specific situation, if, if, it sort of behooves us to make a specific comment in this, in the sort of exceptional circumstance. And what I heard our city council rep, Gillian say was that like typically you don't have these mid-year decisions. And that the budget decision that will take place, the general budget decision that will take place will account for other positions, other departments, so on and so forth. So I think it, it would, it would be helpful, I think, to really locate with greater precision, the source of this recommendation and like why, why, why it matters now. Because I think not saying that, I, I think as someone who isn't on the crisis response roundtable, initially I was just thinking about the need for it to be staffed, like the general need for it to be staffed. And I think, Dr. Wanda, you said that well, like hundred percent agree. I have no qualms about it, want that support to be there. I think what feels like a slight rub is saying specifically, we want the money to come from here. Well, why do we want the money to come from here? Well, six months ago or however long ago, this thing happened. And I feel like that's a valid reason. I think I'm at a point where all things considered, I'm willing to see us have some, some courage and make the recommendation that the, that the fifteen positions that the, that the fifteen positions be funded in this specific way, considering the context. Um all the, all that's been mentioned because of the remaining opening positions, because of the police, the law enforcement feedback that, you know, there are things that they would want off their plate. You know, the, the feedback around Ryan's uh expertise um and like trusting that like these unarmed positions, whether it was uh crisis diversion or a community response or even co-response, I'm not sure. I think it seems like there's enough support for this generally. I think the real question is like, is it the will of this group to make this specific request considering these contexts around what was promised? Or or to what Jillian said, the can that was kicked down the road. Um and I think, I I don't want to feel pigeonholed as a body to say that we can't make other general requests about how these positions should be funded or should they be funded, whatever. And so I think I'm more supportive of what Mike was saying to be more specific, be more precise, uh if that's possible, uh while honoring the expertise of the department's hires um and the the judgment of the city, of City Council. Um but because this, there seems to be some exceptional energy here, like I'm just sitting with that. I'm seeing more in the chat. Jesse, the points you suggest covering are, one, the history.
I was just trying to make sure I heard you correctly.
Yeah. And then I'm seeing what Shanice said, if we don't have the right structures in place to heal the emotional and mental traumas, oh, sorry, uh of of our people, we will never get to where we need to be. Our community needs to heal and needs to start now, which means we need to see our healing prioritized in this community. It is necessary to put the money where the actual needs are. I'm really struggling to scroll right now, y'all. We need to divest funds from structures that cause harm and invest in real community care, radical care. Now is the time. Xavier, I do agree with Jesse's suggestion because we know that the reporting of the decision will focus on the recommendation language, not the accompany. I think this proposal is both. It is a request to see a robustly staffed role of unarmed compassionate.
Xavier, um did I understand you correctly when you said you agree with Jesse's suggestion? Because we know that the reporting of the decision will focused on recommendation language. Do you, do you literally mean like the reporting by journalists and reporters?
I'm, I'm saying just the general nature of um decisions from bodies like this is going to be truncated down to this is the recommendation. In having been a reporter for a small time in college, I, I always like my editors did not get, give, this is not what I said. You know, editors are going to give you just what they want to put out there. So I'm saying if, if we end up with this being just what the actual recommendation says, we want to make sure that it's clear based on, that's my opinion, based on the conversations we've had tonight. Mm-hmm. And Samuel's hands up.
Yes, I have another quick question. Um and I guess to preface going into this question, I know this meeting we're having right now is available to the general public. However, I would like to know if you all, as a roundtable, consider showing this proposal to the community again? And I guess you could say a check-in of sorts to kind of see like, hey, we've conducted these listening sessions within the past year. We've also looked at past instances of gathering public input and we just want to make sure that this proposal um is matching what you all were telling us um to kind of get a sense of like, hey, we've been here, we've been working on this proposal and we just want to make sure it's accurately, accurately reflecting what the community wants.
We haven't done a new round around this specific proposal of community input. But I will say that when uh the question came up of whether to reallocate vacancies from DPD to uh staff unarmed compassionate crisis response, that community response was overwhelming. I mean, there were just hundreds and hundreds of people who wrote letters in and spoke at meetings and showed up for community events and said over and over again, we really need this. I feel like Shanice's comment that Jesse read aloud really kind of vocalized what we heard in those spaces. And I, I do think this proposal is coming in the spirit of that, so. Yeah.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate, I, I totally appreciate everyone's time. Wanda um says she had to go to a seven o'clock meeting and she apologized and was grateful for this conversation. So um I'm sure we um, I hate that she's not here for the decision. And Sammy, what's just, what you're suggesting is just good basic research. And again, the timing of it just kind of hit us all of a sudden. But uh that doesn't, that doesn't stop us from doing that. I would love to talk to you about some ways that we can do that as well. So I'll be, I'll get in touch with you about that.
I'm just wondering like, I know we've said that there would be two moments for public conversation. Is the plan in this moment or is the, is the plan now in this, at the, by the end of this session that we'll have made a decision about this particular recommendation? Yes.
That is the, that's, that's exactly why we convened today, to make a decision whether to move forward with this or not because of the timing um with the upcoming City Council meeting on Thursday. Yes.
I think that's the hope and we could decide we can't come to a decision. We could vote it down, like we have lots of options here and
Yes.
Our timeline is where we can find agreement on moving forward together.
Uh Mike's hands up.
So uh I'd asked this in the chat before, do you guys know if, if any of you, assuming you're able or are allowed to attend that work session to be available for any questions that the council may have of you? So if they're bringing, if they're, you know, they're raising questions about, well, where do you think it ought to get better? You know, things you don't necessarily have to write into this recommendation, if you know you'll be able to be there uh to answer those anticipated questions, some of the very ones we've been raising.
Yeah, if we were to pass this recommendation, I think it would make sense for us to then agree on who we'd like to have represent this then bring it to council or have Martian Xavier carry the the ideas that were lifted in this conversation in the spirit of it into the space.
Because that lets you answer the question about, you know, why are we coming now and why, why so? Well, because you got, you, City Council said you'd be making the decision. That's why we're.
That's the formal process for our uh task force. But then also, any community members who are listening to this, please know that work sessions are open to us. Like you should absolutely reach out if you have thoughts, feelings about this. If you've been involved in the listening sessions and want to carry your comment directly into the room, you'll only be allowed to share on audio. But um if you tell the city clerk that you want to comment by ten AM on Thursday and you register for this Zoom, then you get to participate.
Thank you. Jennifer, thanks for your patience.
Oh, no, no, no problem. Um I, I just wanted to, if, if I'm jumping the gun, please stop me. But I had been hearing, I think I'm hearing some requests to just add like a clause of context to the recommendation. Um and so i- is, is there an ask to add like a sentence to the beginning of the recommendation as it's written, like these fifteen positions were frozen with the open question of whether they would be allocated to the Department of Community Safety at mid-year? Now that we are in mid-year, we recommend that. And then our ish, ish sort of it, like is that, is that what we are asking? And I'm curious how.
Yeah. What I was asking, that's what I was suggesting.
I've seen a lot of head nods and thumbs up.
That's, yes. And that's why I was, again, what I heard Manju say was that the ideal recommendation was for both, that we would be able to be both general and specific. I think at, at this point though, because of the specific nature, I'd rather us just be specific. Because I think it gets confusing and muddled if we're trying to do both. And like, because what is, what is, uh, no one here is going to say generally, we don't want these fit, these positions funded. Of course, we want those, these positions funded. But I think specifically, we want to take advantage of these particular fifteen positions as opposed to fifty or a hundred or however many, however many we might recommend based on what we're hearing from the community and what data is suggesting is appropriate so that the Community Safety Department is set up for success. But in this specific instance, we have fifteen positions that could be cut, that could come from DPD for aforementioned reasons. And again, I think I, I'm, I'm willing to support a specific request uh of a specific proposal um that's located in that context so that the position, that the department continues to get what it deserves. And hopefully we'll see more of that in the general budget um that is to come. And perhaps like it's, it's incumbent upon us to be aware of the, but the general budget cycles so that if we're wanting to strategically make recommendations about how we want to see the Department of Community Safety funded more generally, then we comment generally on the general, in like, in that general budget. But this special window feels special and significant. I feel like I'm rambling and repeating myself, so hopefully my point has been made. Because I don't, I, I don't know that it was clear before, but yeah.
I think there's a response uh from Manju in the chat. I believe this is a rewording that you're suggesting, Manju? Or no?
Yeah, but I'm like dangerously verbose, so if someone wants to like make it elegant, please make this sleek. But maybe would this be language that someone would like to adapt and create a motion around? In June twenty twenty-one, City Council members relocated five vacancies from Durham Police Department to launch the Community Safety Department with a commitment to revisit the topic in January twenty twenty-two of reallocating the remaining fifteen policing vacancies that they froze in the DPD budget. And now the Community Safety and Wellness Task Force is offering a recommendation that the fifteen vacancies be unfrozen to ensure maximally robust staffing of the unarmed skilled crisis response pilots. So if someone wants to put that in plain language, that could be an addition that might meet the need.
I think Isaac has already copied and pasted it, am I right?
Yeah, I, I'm in the document. Um and we'll share my screen in just a second, as soon as these are complete sentences. And then everyone, feel free to tell me everything that you hate about what I have written. Um it's a creative process. Um so let's see.
We should all say thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Manju. Thanks for being willing to take all these last minute, change this word, change it. We've all been there.
And that's what secondary is all about.
Recommendations and then the, and then the peanut gallery has all kinds of ideas.
But, but this is what makes it a true task force recommendation. This is how it's supposed to work and I love it. I love making this. Although again, it's seven oh seven and I, I don't want to lose any of my other members. Could we look at the, uh, could you share your screen again so we can see the document as is?
Let me share my screen. Um thank you for not saying anything about how many tabs I have open.
Are you, I don't, I don't know that you are mimicking co-hosts. Are you? Okay, you're good.
Okay. Um, all right. So this is what I have open. The original language is just right there. Um I've copied what Manju gave us here and I'm uh taking her invitation to whittle it down.
From the cheap seats, I might suggest you, uh, this is all really important content, but this may belong in like rationale or background and just keep the specific recommendation that we had it. This explains why it's coming to them, but the first thing they see is what the specific recommendation is. And then the why follows.
Yeah, I, I, again, I hope that we have a little background in the recommendation itself, seriously.
Yeah, um so I know that I have a weird monitor at work. Are y'all able to actually see that text? Is it legible to you?
Some of us have bifocals. We're trying.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Is that too many? Uh, that's not too many.
Oh, that's good.
All right. So, so here's, um, for those of us that process information auditorily, here's what it looks like now and yeah, we can edit. So in June twenty twenty-one, City Council members relocated, that should be fifteen, right?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, fifteen vacancies for, no?
No, they relocated five vacancies, which is how we hired some of the amazing people working at the Department of Community Safety.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, right, right.
Reading comprehension. Thank you. Okay, so in June twenty twenty-one, City Council members relocated five vacancies from the Durham Police Department to launch the Community Safety Department with a commitment to revisit the topic in January twenty twenty-two of reallocating the remaining fifteen police vacancies that they froze in the Durham Police Department budget. We now find ourselves in January twenty twenty-two at that anticipated decision point. The Community Safety and Wellness Task Force is recommending that these fifteen vacancies be unfrozen to ensure maximally robust staffing of the unarmed still skilled crisis response pilots. Specifically, the task force recommends, and then this is the language that we had before, the City Council begin to staff the twenty-two, twenty-three unarmed, excuse me, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three unarmed skilled crisis care responder pilots by reallocating the fifteen DPD vacancies, FTE positions, frozen last year to the Department of Community Safety. And I guess we don't need that um acronym there.
And that is the new language. That's what will be presented.
If folks are happy.
In, in my mind, I think the second paragraph is really just a sentence. I imagine that as the first thing. And then the, the, the sort of remaining features, the first and third paragraph would be put in background at the top of that section to sort of, again, locate the context of the recommendation. And if there's a way to um make sure that that flows nicely with, with, with what is already in the background, then that would make, that, that makes sense to me. So again, you have your quick hot take. Our task force recommends fifteen vacancies be unfrozen to ensure staffing, uh la, 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 effective immediately, background in June twenty twenty-one, boop, 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 boo. The allocation of these full-time equivalent, da, 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 ba, 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 ba. That's what, that's, that's what makes sense to me.
That would take us back to where we were, where the information from the background is no longer the headline.
Is that what, is that what you recommend or you recommend that the, the, the quick headline have the context?
I, I recommend the quick headline have the context.
Okay.
I know it's a lot. I know it's a lot.
City Council is going to read it, Xavier. You're saying how like reporters doing the quick report are going to read it. So you want them to see that. I see what you mean.
And all the people that we represent.
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I, it was the broader public, I should have said.
Yes, yes.
Just the City Council member.
Right.
Just noting that Jennifer is writing into the document titled Crisis Responders Proposal. And I believe the one that Isaac had opened was Draft of Crisis Response Recommendation.
That is correct.
Let's make sure we're making our changes all to one.
Yeah, Jennifer, Jennifer, can you put that in the, just copy and paste that in the chat and then I'll put it in the, the real document? Oh, you got it there?
I'm here. Yeah, I'm here. Look at all these anonymous participants. Yeah, thanks, guys. I was over having my own party somewhere. Um, so am I, am I hearing correctly that the recommendation is to look? Here, this should.
I think the recommendation is just to add the new language to the background.
Is it? I thought we.
Yeah, I had initially said that, but Xavier clarified that it feels important that the initial section contained some of the important context.
Got it.
So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to concede to that. Yeah, so.
So was there a recommendation to remove the second pair or to move the second paragraph to the top as sort of our headliner? No, Isaac. Okay, then don't let me.
Yeah. Let me tell you why I was saying no in in the many resolutions that I've been a part of. The background is just very thick at the top and at the end, it kind of like bound. Here's the main thing. And I just feel like that we should. I love the way it's formed here, even the way the you know, that second paragraph. Yeah, yeah, there we go. I think it forces you to get down to the bottom line. And if you're going to report the bottom line, you have the background behind it. If you're going to make, you know, take in the bottom line of what we're saying here, you would have already been forced to look at the why. And because many people are going to ignore the background. That's just that's just the real deal. This looks good. Is anyone else? I don't have my I'm not seeing everyone. Does anyone else have that handout? I want to make sure that we have heard from everyone that wants to speak to this. Is there any? Anyone else that has not spoken that would like to speak to this? Okay.
I don't know why this is bothering me so much. Can I? Can I do that? Can I? Can I just make that a compound sentence? There.
What's that?
So we just had, we had the recommendation twice, like we recommend, we give the background, we recommend. So I just
Okay.
brought it in to be. Yeah.
I just wanted, while we're together, I wanted to just echo and amplify a comment that Wanda made that I know I've heard in other conversations about the hesitation or I perception that like shifting these positions will make it harder to respond to crises where violent gun violence is happening or some kind of weapon is in play. And we need to figure out how to respond compassionately and thoughtfully in those situations as well. And I feel like at least in my experience, I think it's 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 a bit easier when you're not as close to the pain sometimes to think about just unarmed responses being sufficient when you have the right people who have the expertise and the patience and the capacity to respond. And just in my listening, I know that I'm hearing more incidents where people are encountering a level of physical violence and wanting someone who is armed specifically to be activated to respond. And not that that is in like, I'm still 100% supportive of this. But it just feels important to lift that up, that that is a real concern of several of our community members who are particularly close to the pain. And I don't want us to, I want us to be as faithful to them as we are to the folks that are in need of services that don't require someone with a weapon, right? And I know that's really hard and scary. But I've heard several folks, you know, say like, I didn't know what else to do. And I hated calling the police, but I didn't feel like I had either option because I was in physical danger, right? And like, I just, it just feels important to lift that up, that these are real fears and concerns of community members. And I mean, that's the work that we're all doing.
Absolutely.
And so it isn't to say that anyone isn't sensitive to that. But it just feels important to lift that up as we make this decision that we are not that this that this potential recommendation doesn't compete or conflict with our hope for compassionate responses in the incidents where we know physical violence and weapons are essentially necessary based on what's happening. And just wanted to lift that up because that's real with what's also happening in Durham.
It's so real. And thank you so much. We're we're about to lose another member who's got to go to another meeting. If we are ready, we could entertain a motion. I do want to mention that we we currently have 13 members here, which will require a two thirds vote will require 8.58, which rounds up to nine members in order to pass. Is there a motion?
I'm moving to approve.
Based on the language we have here?
Yes. So.
Give me a second. I'm happy to second.
I'm sorry, did I think Mike muted yourself? I didn't hear the motion.
Sorry, I said a move to approve, and I heard a second from somebody.
It's been moved by Mike, second by Esak, that we approve the current language for this proposal from the crisis response. Are you ready for the votes? Okay. I will call you by name. Alec.
I approve. I don't know how to. I don't know how to vote, but I agree.
Yes and no is fine. Yes and no is fine. If you abstain and abstain is a yes as well. A yes or no, again, abstain would be counted as a yes. Thank you, Alec. Have you down as a yes? Isaac?
Yes.
Jatoya?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yeah.
Manju?
Emphatic, yes.
Marcia?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Muffin?
Yes.
Nori?
Yes.
Samuel?
Yes.
Shanice?
Yeah.
And Xavier? Yes. Okay. Have to report that it passes unanimously. There are so many other places you could be. Some of you were supposed to be other places tonight. I apologize to the SRO group. But thank you for the the rich discussion and for your service to this community. There are some other things that are probably to share, but we will send out an email.
Do you have access to this document? Or do you need me to cut and paste and email the text to you? What would you prefer?
Oh, yeah, it's my document. I just sent it out. So I've got it. I've got it, and we will send out. I'll send. I'll make sure Amber gets it in the morning or tonight to do whatever she's supposed to do with it. If there's no other, yes.
Are we asking that you two, Marcia and Xavier, please represent the proposal to city council?
When is that meeting exactly? I don't. I'm not sure I'm I'm able to attend.
It's Thursday at 1:00 PM work session. And then it looked like Ryan's presentation is item 10, but I didn't know when that would be. Maybe contacting city staff would help us understand when they expect it would take place. But his presentation is supposed to be 40 minutes. I don't feel clear enough about city council process to understand would public comment happen at the beginning of the meeting, the end of the meeting, or during that item? Does anyone know?
Normally, public comment is right before the item from what I've seen.
So
I don't know the procedure either, but just reminding Xavier and Marcia that you also have emails for city councils, say, could in until you know the procedure, just email them directly.
Yes. And that meeting is at 1:00 on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not
Can I just ask, is this body okay with individuals on task force making public comment? Or would you prefer that we not make our own individual public comment? And just have Xavier and Marcia making their own?
I I'm comfortable with Marcia and Xavier making comments about the proposal, particularly if they're able to attend. I think if they're not able to attend, and there isn't another way for them to be present, then it might make sense for us to appoint someone else. But I think if people want to continue to speak, I think it's, I think you can speak for yourself. And I want to honor that you can show a poll, but I would want to make it. I want us to be thoughtful and discerning about like, when are you speaking on behalf of this body? Or when are you speaking on behalf of yourself? And I think in those instances, you should be clear if one decides to speak like, is this you or is this like us, you? That would be my, I know that's how as someone who wears a lot of hats and sometimes like, that's the best way to be authentic and transparent so that people know where I'm coming from when I'm saying something.
So I'm not hearing that there's concerns about speaking public comment into the room as oneself or as a member of another organization. But making clear that none of us are speaking for the task force except for our
Yeah, I would. I would appreciate that. The only other thing that I would add is just keeping in mind that, like, at the same time, it's I won't say it's implied, but it is clear that like we are all task force members and not wanting to misuse the sort of relative power that we have in these in in this position. And just being thoughtful about that. But I think that's something that we all have to discern for ourselves. So I wouldn't make that decision for you. I would just ask again that you be thoughtful and discerning if you decide to show up in public space that way and hope that like you'll be open to comprehensive support of encouragement and accountability if you respond in a way that feels worth acknowledging, you know? And that's the joy of community, right? So that that would that would again be my my feedback to that. I never want to silence anyone. And want to make space to listen and want to be in real community and be able to like respond. If you put your something out there, then I can respond to that accordingly.
I appreciate that framing. I did actually talk about this with our city manager. And she reminded us all that we we did not renounce our citizenship when we came on this task force. But but to and emails are a very effective way as well. And to do so as yourself and as a member of the task force, you know, to make that clear. So thank you for that framing.
And Thursday looks okay. I can I can do it. Can you, Xavier?
I have to move some things around, but I'm going to do my very best. Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.